It's. And just, we have one regret from a counselor, Councilor Roderick Murphy. That he wouldn't be able to make it tonight, do the work. We have an agenda. Does anybody have anything to add?
I just want to put something under correspondence. I have a one hundred birthday celebration. I just want to read a little letter that I received and perhaps we'll talk about it later.
That'd be under seven?
Oh, under eight, under correspondence you want that?
Put it under seven, yeah.
Under seven for other business, okay.
I'm gonna speak later.
Seven D?
Seven D.
And I'd also like to add something.
Yes.
I think I sent you guys an email.
Yes.
Of the possible funding for some filming of the Tuscaloosa by Chris Lockyer, the.
Right.
Yeah.
And that would be, that would be for decision?
Seven E.
Under seven, doesn't need its decision right now?
No.
No, under seven E, so. And I have one, and that's gonna have to be under decision. So, seven G.
Seven G.
Seven G, ah, six G, sorry, six G.
Six G.
Yes, for decision. It's due to the Western Library's annual conference, so I'll bring that up under, under that topic here. Does any? Okay, we need an approval for the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Seconded.
We've been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any contact of interest declaration from anybody? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number three, which is the presentation, and we have the Quinnen and District Volunteer, excuse me, Volunteer Fire Department with Chief Aaron Pache.
Good evening. So, yeah, those of you that haven't met me, I'm Aaron Pache, I'm the chief of the Quinnen Fire Department. There are a few of our firefighters, we've got Edward, Andrew Doucette, they're captains, we've got Jennifer Doucette. Behind me, we've got Paul Ghoul, he's our deputy chief, and Joe Doucette, that's one of our firemen. So, we'll get down to this. We were established in nineteen eighty-one. There was a few incidents that happened in the community where the residents felt that it was a need to have our own fire department. We serve the communities of Quinnen and Spring Haven, have one of the largest districts in the municipality. The only district that's larger than us is Kemp, and Kemp is divided with the municipality of Yarmouth. And since I typed up the presentation, we've added two members, so we have thirty-one members now. Twelve have level one training, and we have six that have done level two training, and we have some that are looking to do that in the fall for both. We have eighteen medical first responders, which are a great asset to our community. Being kind of remote, we're often unseen ten to fifteen minutes before EHS arrives. We have oxygen, we have an AED. To me, I don't think the communities of Quinnen and Spring Haven have ever been better, better served from a personal and training point of view. In twenty seventeen, we responded to twenty-two calls. Pretty well on average, it's getting a little busier every year, there's more and more seasonal activity that goes on every year, and things are getting a little busier all the time. This year has been a little bit unusually busy, but we've already had fourteen calls so far. Ten of them were fire calls and four were medical calls. We have a population roughly of four hundred. We have a hundred and nine seasonal properties, so the population in the summertime and those seasonal properties goes up a lot. And there's a lot that are seasonal visitors that not necessarily listed because those are campers and hunters and stuff like that. So, there's a, there's a fair amount of activity that goes on. We cover roughly four hundred square kilometers or ninety-eight hun- ninety-eight thousand acres. That's just a look at what our district looks like. This is a map of our district, and this is a breakdown of the municipality. So, you can see Kemp is a little bigger than ours, ours is a little smaller, theirs is a little smaller. We cover Quinnen, Spring Haven, it follows the Tuscaloosa River for a while, and in the back country, it butts up with the line, the Shelburne County line. So, it goes quite a ways. Why we're here today. Aside from being in good shape with members, we are, we're in hard shape with our trucks. We have two trucks, a pumper and a tanker, one's in nineteen eighty-nine, the other's in nineteen eighty-seven. They are, they're serving their purpose, but they're getting less and less reliable every year. They're getting more expensive to maintain, and as they're getting more expensive, parts are getting harder to find. One example, we had our primer let go on our pumper a few years ago to practice. Just finding the parts for something that old is, is, is hard to do. Then you've got to get them and have them put in, so the pumper was down for probably a week and a half just waiting for parts. They gotta come out of the US and all that stuff, so. Little things like that aren't a big deal when you have a practice, but if it happens when you're on a fire scene, it's a big deal, so. Standards on, on the fire apparatus. NFPA sets the standards on most everything in North America when it comes to the fire service. It stands for National Fire Protection Association. The Canadian ULC standards is what we go by, and they pretty well mirror what NFPA sets. NFPA, they set first-line apparatus, first-line duty apparatus should be retired after twenty years in a small community like ours, okay? After that, you can keep them as reserve or second line. Beyond thirty years, they don't give any grading for those. So, what they mean by that is if an insurance company ever comes to check, you, when you go to your insurance company, they'll ask you, are you within so many miles of a fire department? And you tell them, yes. The fire department has rules to follow too, so if the insurance company ever comes to check and we don't have equipment that meets the criteria, we're technically not providing the service that they require. So, after thirty years, they want you to get rid of those. While we're prepared to operate secondary stuff over twenty years, we feel very strongly that our number-one first-out truck should be something that's up to standard, up to date. We've, it's, we've gone over our options for quite a while. We've done our homework. The trucks we've had now, we bought used when they were twenty years old, that was what we did back then. To me, if we spend a large, large amount of money on something that's already twenty, twenty-five years old, we're taking the taxpayers' money and we're investing it into something that isn't gonna last, it's something that we have to take extra money to put into to make it our own and to maintain, so. With a used truck, you also have to wonder why is it for sale? Why has a department, let's say the truck is fifteen years old or twelve years old, why did that department get rid of that truck before it was to the end of its life? Because we all know we operate on limited funds, so why are they getting rid of it before it's at the end of its life, okay? Will it meet our needs? It was built for somebody else, if I buy a truck that was built for the city of Halifax, let's say, is that gonna meet the needs in Quinnen? Is that gonna meet the needs in Surtal, is that gonna meet? They're built for their own places, they're custom vehicles, right? The high risk, you're inheriting whatever cost to maintain those trucks you get, whatever repair costs are with that truck. And the location, a lot of these used trucks you'll find online, you can look up online, there's all kinds of used fire trucks, but a lot of these trucks are in the US. Just to get them up here is a logistical nightmare, and beyond that, the exchange rate between Canada and the US is so high that it makes it virtually impossible. And the life expectancy, like I said, if you, if you buy something that's seventeen, eighteen years old, you're, you're gonna be back at this looking for a truck in just a few short years, so. Refurbishment, we looked kind of heavily into this, but refurbishing a truck would mean taking the body, the pump, off our existing pumper and putting it onto a new cab or chassis. So, we go buy a freightliner, we go buy an international, a Ford, whatever, and we take what we have now, put it on there. So, we'd essentially have a new truck, but we'd end up with an old body. What happens there is our pump is already thirty years old, so if I take that new truck and I use it for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, all of a sudden, now we have a fifty, fifty-five-year-old pump. How much, how much can you depend on that, and for how much longer can we find parts for that, okay? One of the things that was mentioned to us by the manufacturers is that a refurbished truck will never be able to be ULC certified, so it gets no credit as far as the insurance grading goes. And the cost of refurb is still pretty high, again, the chassis itself is gonna be a hundred, a hundred twenty-five thousand, so we're looking at something over two hundred thousand just to have it refurbished. A new truck, while it's pretty expensive, it would be something that provide the communities of Quinnen and Spring Haven and its dedicated volunteers with a reliable fire truck for the next twenty-five years. They don't have to worry about it, it'll be something that'll be there, they can focus on other things. It'll meet modern safety and operating standards. You'll get manufacturer's warranty, so that way you're kind of protecting the taxpayers' investment. If something goes wrong, goes wrong, you have warranty with that for quite a while. Doing more with less, we've heard that a lot over the years, especially now that times have been tight. But it's not only a financial thing, it's also a personnel. A lot of our fire departments, the members are getting older, we don't have as many younger people joining. So, we have to have a balance. We ask a lot of our volunteers for training, right now, we're doing two trainings a month, we have a monthly meeting. Some of our firefighters on the auxiliary, they meet with the auxiliary, so it takes a lot. On top of that, when we have fundraisers, we ask them to attend our fundraisers and help out at the fundraisers, so it gets to be a lot. You can only ask so much of people, especially when you're working and stuff. The doing more with less, our truck, we're gonna design it with that in mind, something that will be easy to operate. For one, it'll have an automatic transmission, both our trucks we have now have standard transmissions with a, with a two-speed rear end. They're very hard to get used to drive, anybody has driven one, some people never get used to it. So, that alone will make a big difference, it'll encourage a lot of people to get used to driving the truck and operating the pump. It'll be a dual-purpose pumper-tanker, so that if ever one of the other trucks breaks down, it can do either job. And at the end of its life, it can serve as a reserve, second-line tanker itself, so that it can be replaced with another pumper. The operating grants and area rates. The larger departments in the municipality, not that I want to step on anybody, but the larger departments in the municipality get a lot more from their operating grants. And not only that, they have a lot bigger of a tax base than we have. So, from their own area rates, they get a lot more. The tax base just doesn't exist in Quinnen and Spring Haven, and it's not, not just us, I guess, Alleson District, Kent, Amiro's Hill, even East Pomniko. East Pomniko is a little bit of a unique situation because of where it's placed, but they still have that, that low tax base. Even though our, our grants are lower and our tax base is smaller, it's, the expenses are still there, we still have to outfit our thirty-one members now. The cost for just the bunker suit, the helmet, the boots, is roughly about thirty-five hundred dollars, so each one of those people needs to be outfitted. The suits are only good for ten years, anybody that's got level one needs a new suit every ten years. A pager is between six and nine hundred dollars now. Most every fireman needs a pager unless it's a couple that they have, one for the two of them. Equipment, testing, cleaning, all that stuff is going up, more, more emphasis is being put on cleaning every year, testing, so. All that stuff is stuff that we have to pay the same as the big guys, the fuel, the heating, and we do all that with a fraction of the grant, the operating grant that everybody else gets, so. What we're asking for from the municipality is a commitment to having a fire department in Quinnen for many years, and what we're asking for financially is a hundred and twenty-five thousand towards the purchase of a new truck. The preliminary estimates we've gotten from manufacturers have come in at three hundred and thirty thousand. We've asked our auxiliary, which have done a great job at fundraising, for twenty-five thousand. And we expect, expect to set an area rate to cover the remaining amount. And depending on what the municipality will give us and what the rest of the estimates come up to, we expect probably have to go up to nine or ten cents with our area rate to cover that. And we expect to probably finance the truck for twelve years. Twelve years is kind of a, it's a little bit long enough to make it affordable for us, it still keeps it about halfway in the truck's life, so we're not paying too long. There's a couple ways, I guess, the municipality can go about it if they want to. We could go with a lump sum, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if, if the municipality feels they can, they can put that out. If not, we could always go, the fire department could borrow the entire cost of the truck. And the municipality could up our operating grant over twelve years by ten thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars. That would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand divided by twelve, so our area rate plus that would make the payments every year. Which would make it a lot more manageable, I think, for the municipality, and it wouldn't make a whole lot of difference to us in the long run, except for the little bit extra interest charges. As for the second truck, they're both thirty years old, give or take, so, I mean, we have to have a plan on what we're doing with the, with the second truck. A big part of the taxes that we pay on a new truck, the fire department will be getting back, so that'll be somewhere between thirty and forty thousand. We can put that aside and use it to buy a used tanker. We can probably find a used twenty-year-old tanker and use it for ten, ten years or something, and that, you know, you're setting yourself up that way. They're easier to find and they're cheaper to find, the pumper is an expensive piece of equipment and nobody wants to get rid of their good pumper. So, we'll keep our existing pumper while the repair costs remain reasonable, and the tanker. The reason that we want to keep the pumper is that in case something goes wrong with the new truck when we get it, for one. And number two, if, if a flood ever happens again, every time we have a flood, we send one of our trucks on the other side. If we send one of our trucks on the other side, it ties us up on this side. In the past, we've had some departments bring us some of their trucks in to cover, but that takes away from somebody else. So, having that extra piece of equipment there in case we ever need it, which is, it's worth more to us to have it in the haul than to get rid of it. Because nobody's gonna pay a big amount of money for, for nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen eighty-seven, so. Each municipality has their own way of, of going about supporting their fire departments, I know around here, there's different things that our municipalities have done. Some have been more aggressive than others when it comes to replacing trucks and, and funding them, some have a lot less. I'd like to thank you guys for the support we've had in the past, you guys have supported us well. Argyle is very well involved with its fire departments. I know it's a lot of money to ask for, but it's money that'll be kept here. We've had a lot of, of grants given out over the last little while that are at the higher end, you know, six figures or more, and they're often outside of our municipality. This is money spent here, it's money kept in our communities, money kept in the municipality, it's something that, that you're investing here, okay? The fire department in smaller communities like ours, they're, they're the harder community. I mean, for us to have thirty-one members, that's out of four hundred people, that's, that's a big part of the community, so it brings together people from all walks of life. It doesn't matter what your job is, how old you are, there's a place for everybody, as you can see. We try to give everybody their own something to do, there's, not everybody has to be on the end of a hose, so. Important information, I guess, and dates. We have an rate pairs meeting coming up August, August the second, so. In accordance with the municipality's policies, we need an answer on, on yes or no, or how much, before July nineteenth, to ensure that we can advertise our rate pairs meeting, right? The reason that we're here today, I guess, and not later on in the year or next spring to ask for this money, is because if I order a truck next month, if I order one in September, we're looking at a year before that truck is delivered, so I still gotta stretch what we have, at least, you know, a year, nine months to a year. So, nothing is gonna happen overnight, so this has to be planned well in advance, so none of this money has to come tonight, this is gonna be into next tax year. But we have to keep the ball rolling and make decisions. So, we set the date of August second for our rate pairs meeting, some advertising has already gone out to tell people about that, but it has to be done properly before that. So, we'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to present our case, and we'll finish with, with this, it's a conclusion out of one of NFPA's guidelines. It says, "A fire apparatus is an emergency vehicle that must be relied on to transport firefighters safely to and from an incident and to operate reliably and properly to support the mission of the fire department. A piece of fire apparatus that breaks down at any time during an emergency operation not only compromises the success of the operation but might jeopardize the safety of the firefighters relying on what, on that apparatus to support their role in the operation. An old, worn-out, or properly maintained fire apparatus has no role in providing emergency services to a community." So, that's where I'll, I'll stop it, if you guys have questions, go right ahead and I'll, I'll do my best to answer.
Any questions, Jenny, David?
Just a comment.
Yep.
You did an excellent presentation on, on, on your, on your cause, and I congratulate you, there, right, there's no room for my any questions in my head.
Thank you.
Well informed, for sure.
Great presentation.
Like I said, we, we, this is something that we've probably should have done a long time ago, and so we've done our homework, we've been thinking about this for a long time. We didn't wanna, it gets a lot of money, we didn't want to jump into this or come here, ask you guys for anything, if we didn't think it was the best way to go, so.
Anybody else? Counselor Sreck?
The, the, the bigger fire departments more than likely would have more calls.
They do, yeah.
Would that be, I think that would be a truth.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I know like Wedgeport, Pomniko are in the, like, fifty, sixty.
Yeah. They'd be, they'd be a little more active, or probably a little more money probably helps them on that end, but I certainly understand what you're saying about small departments. How we work, um, so you're, you, so this decision is, it says August the second is your annual meeting. If we needed some time here, could you delay that meeting till September or not really?
Again, if we delay till September, then we're waiting till next September before we get a truck.
For delivery anyhow.
And we still have to get the, the designs done up and approved, and it has to go, so there, there's a bunch of different things that have to fall into place, so I guess.
Yeah.
It would.
It would work better.
It would work better for us if not, but.
One more thing, if you don't mind.
No?
Do you know, when we were at one of the meetings in town, I remember, or at, sorry, Lake Vaughan, some of the other fire departments are funded definitely for apparatus.
Yep.
I know Lakeson District, I was talking to one of the guys there, and they have a fire rate in their district.
Yeah.
But by gosh, you take Grandson District, yours, Amiro's Hill, with such a small population, man, you need thirty cents for an area rate.
Like, I, I have the numbers of what the different fire departments get, just, I'll, I'll just go over a few.
If you wouldn't mind, Eric.
Yeah, West Pomniko's area rate is at three point one three cents, and they get fifty thousand dollars out of that, okay? So, that's, it's a pretty substantial amount for a small area rate. Wedgeport is at seven cents, they get seventy thousand. Eelbrook has a rate of seven point five cents, and they get seventy-five thousand, four hundred forty-seven, okay? So, they, it's the residential and the commercial and all that stuff, there's, there's no commercial in our, our nickel woods. Also, at six cents, we get seventeen thousand.
That's what I wanted to know, you got it, man?
And you're not, you're not far off in the mountains either.
Thank you, Eric.
The operating grants, Wedgeport gets, this year, they're gonna get fifty-five thousand, West Pomniko's gonna get sixty-one thousand. Now, the four smaller departments within the municipality will get twenty-one thousand, three, eighty-four, so we're getting roughly a third, so.
Great point.
I said, they, they have a lot more calls, and they have more equipment, so it costs more to operate, but does it cost three times as much?
Great question.
I don't know who I'm gonna, oh, sorry.
No, I just said, if a fire's a fire, it's a fire, it doesn't matter what it costs.
Yeah.
That's right.
Agreed. I don't know who my question's for, you guys in collaboration with other fire departments, or maybe Counselor Sreck could answer this. Do you know who was the last fire department to purchase a truck?
Westport.
Westport.
Westport, I think.
Westport, very recently.
Lake Vaughan just got a tanker, but that was, Lake Vaughan, it was, it was in collaboration with the municipality of Yarmouth, so.
So, to add to that, in, for those counselors that have been here longer, maybe our CAO, in, in the past, how has the municipality helped out with, with such a?
Apparatus.
Yeah, see, I'm thinking maybe because the larger ones have a little bit more money, would, would have been obviously less of an ask, but, I mean.
I don't know that, that anybody's ever had any.
Not that I can tell.
No.
There's never been a capital grant issued?
Building, buildings.
Uh, for, for fire trucks, for tankers or pumpers?
We've always gone along the lines that it's, it's good enough, it's all, and, and we've operated with the old stuff, we've always had old stuff. In the beginning, they bought an old truck and they built their own fire truck, you know, but you can't do that anymore, standards have changed, things have changed, so.
Uh, the standards, our, our truck was built in nineteen eighty-nine. Yeah, the NFPA standard came out in nineteen ninety-one, and it's been revised three times, and so all the safety standards and improvements have changed significantly since nineteen, I don't know when the issue of that version was, pre-thirteen eighty-nine, but things have changed a lot since then. Firefighter safety, driving safety, the whole works.
Anybody else?
So, just, just to advise a, a bit on, on the financial side of things. The, certainly the, the fire department, the Quinnen Fire Department's not alone in what they're requesting. There's, there's, there's definitely one other that's at least in the same shape, if not worse, since the Amiro's Hill, Upers Point Fire Department.
That's right.
They have, I think, eighty-one, eighty-three, and eighty-eight.
Yeah.
So, certainly what Quinnen is asking would be the same issue that they would have, is that they don't have the capacity within their district to, to set a rate that is reasonable and also pay for the truck. So, they can pay for the truck with an area rate, but the area rate is unreasonable, you know, so.
That's right, yeah.
So, the question, so, so the other thing that you should be aware of is that the moment that you take on a new truck, and we've seen this in other departments, is that their insurance on the old truck was, it was virtually nil, in fact, it was barely insurable, it was only on replace, barely on like, uh, it, it wasn't on replacement cost because they, it was on like, uh, basic, a, a, a very low, so they could, they basically couldn't insure, the companies, insurance companies could not insure it.
Yeah.
Therefore, the insurance comp, the insurance premium was very low. So, while, while you might expect that fire departments might save money in operations, might save money in maintenance, which would be true, they'd also have an offsetting cost of insurance, so any sort of decision that you make in this regard may put more financial pressure on your fire departments from an operating perspective. So, Aaron is, is aptly points out that the, you know, that there's certainly differences in operating funds. So, any sort of decision that you're gonna make in this regard, you probably have to think about your operating funds as well and, and how that might be impacted in these smaller organizations. So, there are a variety of ways that these are funded, and the big ones typically just take care of themselves. And that is, that the numbers don't lie in this case.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have the visual, the ability, the budget for stuff like that, the, the extra, with the, with the amount of money they have, they can budget for stuff like that. But when you're, when you're operating on seventeen thousand dollars from an area rate, you can't, you can't budget. And even our, our operating grant, I mean, I can't, I can't allocate anything out of that for anything else, because with the cost of everything else, we're, we're barely scraping by with that grant, by the time you purchase other equipment.
Yes.
One other thing I'll add while, while we're talking, there's grants that we can apply for, for other equipment, so there's the, the Emergency Service Provider Fund and all that stuff where we can, we can apply to that for turnout gear or, or breathing apparatus, stuff like that, but that doesn't apply to trucks. There's no grant that applies to trucks.
Did you have anything? Just, uh, uh, go ahead, Counselor, actually.
Just a quick question, I think I know the answer to my question, but I just want to ask, because of affordability, and again, I probably know the answer to my question, but I'd rather hear from you. Has amalgamation with other fire departments, is that something fire departments consider, like the smaller ones?
It's, it's something that's been brought around the table a few times in the past, I don't know, it's, I think that's something that the larger departments, all the departments would have to get together, talk about, but.
It's not something you actively pursue, then?
No.
No, and obviously not, because the need, and I think you mentioned the, was it the early eighties that you were established?
I mean, amalgamation wouldn't really, really give us a whole lot, it wouldn't change a whole lot of things. The fire department still has to stay in Quinnon because of how far out it is. Same thing in Surts Island, it would have to stay in Surts Island. Um, so there's only a a few right maybe in the Tuscan area here that amalgamation could maybe uh save a little bit. But then you if you put a fire department where the residents aren't, then the firefighters aren't close to the fire fire hall. So there's a there's a bunch of different things that come into play there.
Uh, this year, if you don't mind, I'll tell you something. Eighty-one and in eighty-one hours, and a lot of these small departments are going was because the fire departments, Eelbrook, and nothing nothing in their fault, they couldn't supply the service.
Right.
The houses would be too close burnt by the time they arrived.
Yeah.
So this is why we finally made departments, because we needed protection. That's what happened way back then. But it looks while it's affecting us now.
Yeah.
We can't see, we can't survive.
That's why I asked, because it's almost a catch twenty-two. I'm assuming there's a reason these fire departments were structured in the early eighties because it was it was a geographical issue. However, right now it's a funding issue that.
Yeah. I mean, we keep, we've kept it small. We don't, we're not, we're not looking to have five trucks. Uh, we know when there's a major incident, as soon as the the call goes out, Eelbrook, Lake Vaughan, they're they're on their way. But we have to hold our own until they get there, or when when things go bad, in the wintertime when stuff is bad, we we have to be prepared to be on our own for at least twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes. Eelbrook can be there sometimes, uh, ten minutes, that would be pushing. But, uh, yeah, fifteen minutes, we've gotta hold our own.
Yeah. So so the amalgamation question, I mean, if you think about amalgamating fire departments, you're you're probably not saving any money. Uh, what what the the amalgamation, something, I mean, you might. What you might do is is coordinate in a different way if you had multiple fire departments together, like you wouldn't have nine chiefs, you might have six. But I mean, the chiefs are volunteers, so you're not, like you drop them from three to one, you're not like, you're just.
Saving money.
You're not necess that's.
Save me a little bit of work on.
They might, and uh, and you know, and then of course, if you if you amalgamate it, you have one financial statement instead of three, and there's certain things that will make it better. But one of the challenges here is that is that it's the amalgamation question wouldn't be amalgamating fire departments. It might be amalgamating areas. So when you do area rates, so when you think about how service is delivered in, you know, District Five, Four, and Three, you might say, well, you know, instead of SAR or Eelbrook making a decision about their equipment and their equipment only, that that decision would be broader, and everybody would look, there might be three fire departments that take a look at their equipment and say, you know what? That one has to come first, and then this one.
Yeah.
And so you make better decisions potentially. That would be the biggest benefit of actually doing that, because then you'd have the money to do it.
Yeah.
Not having to, and then you'd be able to share the financial, because that's how the that's how fires are being fought right now. They're not being fought by one department. They're being fought by two, three, or four.
Only the small stuff, yeah.
Right, so.
I I find the only place where amalgamation has worked is here. We you have neighboring neighboring towns or or like municipality Barrington. It has worked there because you got Woodsrider, Stackrider, the right next door. You got Barrington Portletour, the right next door. You got all the ones that amalgamated on Cape Island. They're all on Cape Island. So there, it kind of works. Works right out more here.
Yeah, there's a there's a big difference between one or the other.
Yeah. I just wanna clarify too, that I wasn't suggesting it. I was just, I don't want you guys to go home like that counselor from Westport said we should all amalgamate.
It's a discussion, it's a that needs to happen, yeah, yeah.
I I was thinking that, uh, to the council here, that or Allah could maybe speak to this. Is there such a thing as a two-cent rate on our rate for the whole for the whole municipality, just for apparatus?
For like a municipal fire rate, you mean?
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
The municipality player, the municipality player does that. There is.
Always there, it's a day.
And so what they said was, they had the leadership of the of a of a larger fire department that said, you know what? We can get whatever we want with our rate, but that's not enough. We have to support our our brothers and our sisters across the district. So you had you had some really good leadership at the fire department level that said, we need the municipality of Claire not to give us forty thousand dollars a year for this or that and take turns, which is what we do too, by the way. We do, we do take turns on some of these apparatus and and other things that we pay for. But they said, look, you know, why doesn't the municipality of Claire borrow a million bucks and fit us with what we need? And then use that money that they were giving us to pay down that debt.
Yeah.
So the municipality then took with the part the 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 leadership of the volunteers, took what they needed and upgraded it to a point, and everything but the buildings. So this would be like
Apparatus.
A actual apparatus, vehicles, hoses.
Yeah.
And so
Reading apparatus.
And all of those things and said, okay, we're gonna just upgrade everyone. So then, so it took some leadership from the volunteers, but it also took leadership from the council because they had to borrow the money themselves and do it all themselves.
Yeah.
That way, you know, the municipality successfully controlled what was purchased in essence, right? And so that was important to them because these things are so expensive, it can get it can get out of hand pretty fast.
Yeah.
So that's definitely without, if there is a precedent there, the the difficulty we have, I realize I'm speaking long. Um, difficulty we have in this particular situation is that we already have two or three area rates that are quite high, and they're quite high for things that can't change. So so for for instance, Eelbrook's gonna have a high rate because of the building, and Wedgeport just implemented a pretty significant rate for a new truck. So so if you're gonna do that, you have to be conscious of how that impacts other residents. Now that they've already made that commitment to go to seven cents, Quinnon is no different. They're at six six cents right now, right?
And it's gonna like I said, it's gonna have to go quite a bit higher, even to to focus on our side.
And then, sorry, for just last point, in absence of doing that uniform rate.
Yeah.
You, as a council, have the option to equalize it by giving grants.
That's right.
So that's one way to equalize the 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 playing field, if you wanna call it that. Because you don't have an equalized rate, and 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 other units have gotten more than the small. One way to equalize that is to find a way to fund uh some of the smaller uh units.
That's right.
Like a one-time, based on a one-time or two-time request.
Like only you.
So that's, you have options.
Another option there, yeah.
You have options.
I just think that this presentation really kind of brings to light for us that there are some issues going on at fire departments. We've kind of talked about it a little bit here and there.
Yeah.
But this really brings it it to light for us, and it might be, you know, I know I've had conversations with CAO Muse about our funding and our fire departments and our smaller departments and what's going on, and, you know, the fact that, you know, equal isn't always fair and 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 all that kind of stuff. Um, and Aaron made a good point. It is a lot of money, but we've had discussions lately about where is our money going? Right? We've talked a lot about that as a council, and it's not always staying here. This is a project that would stay here, that would help a small fire department that's thriving. It's a thriving fire department that has a lot of members that are really well-trained. So I think we have a lot of things to really think about, to consider, and it might be something that gets us started thinking about how we can change, possibly change some of our our ideas around the funding.
Definitely opened my eyes. I live in a bubble per se. I live, actually, I should say I live on a wedge. I live on a point.
That's the most.
We have our own fire department. We we have a higher rate. We have new equipment. We have good management, and we live, just like Public Works, we live on a point. It's it's central, it's focalized, it's.
And when everything, when everything is going well, it's hard to see.
Yeah.
Outside.
This opens my eyes to to your issues, which as a counselor down in Westport, I don't see as often, so great presentation.
Again, great presentation. Um, actually, I had a fire, a vehicle fire out in Quinnon years ago, and the day I had it, uh, was the day that the fire truck was broke down, and Lake Vaughan, I believe, had to come over to the fire. And needless to say, there was nothing left when they got there.
Yeah, I can imagine that.
And thank God it was only a vehicle fire. If it was a hose or something, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, it would have been a whole lot worse, but I honestly, uh, uh, back up Counselor Albright one hundred percent. I think maybe we do have to start looking on a broader picture and, you know, looking more at uh doing something for our smaller departments, because whether it be four hundred residents or three thousand residents, and that, um, their safety and their belongings still has to be covered.
Yeah.
You know, in some way, you know, and getting, when you get into thirty-year-old vehicles and stuff like that, there's already been a bad incident in Nova Scotia with an old dirt fire truck. And that did not turn out well, so it's not something you wanna get into by no means.
It's nice to see him at a parade, but it's not something you want to.
Exactly. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Muse. I just wanna thank you again for your presentation and also for your your passion and your commitment for to your community. Uh, you know, that's always impresses me, uh. So thank you again, and we will definitely, I think this is, you know, as I I look around the table, and I've been here for seventeen years, and I can kind of tell when all the counselors are 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 interested into, you know, making maybe a change or or, you know, looking into this, and this is one of them, so thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. The the funding you would be looking for wouldn't be right now. You're you're if you order a truck now, it would be in a year's time.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah.
So that it gives us a chance to.
Yeah.
You just want a commitment.
I exactly. I need I need an answer, yes or no, that's all. It doesn't, I don't need the money until next August, September.
Okay. Well, if there's no more questions, again, thank you very much for the presentation. Very, very impressive. And uh, something that we're gonna have to discuss. Did you have something?
No.
No. Uh, just something.
I don't have a fire department in the market.
You don't? Okay, again, thank you very, very much for your.
Thank you, guys.
Very well presented, your presentation.
Good night.
See you later. If I'm here, if you ever give me a long ways, just keep up with the gas, for that, for a long ways.
So if they need a a
Yeah.
When when and how do we make that?
Do we have a meeting after this one?
We'd have to. We'd have to schedule a special meeting to make that decision.
Oh, yeah.
And I think, I think quite frankly, in order for you to, you need information.
Oh, that's a part.
You need information in front of you.
All right. Not even a question?
Yes.
This is.
But it's time-sensitive, and and I mean, they're not lying. Obviously, it's clearly an issue, and it clearly has to happen, so we.
I'd like more information, perhaps, on on the Claire situation.
Yeah, I agree.
And maybe the direction we could go in because.
This is probably more.
That's what, I hate to use.
This is why I brought it up, because I knew about them.
I I mean, I hate to use this term, but I mean, this might be opening up a can of worms, right?
Well, that's what I'm afraid of.
We should have a strategy on how we're gonna move forward for the other departments.
I'll tell you right now, there's something else coming up, so you're right.
It it, for sure. Okay, the next item, council council priority progress report. So it looks like it's we've we've all, except one, we've all done a little bit on on all of them. Very preliminary, except the Wedgeport, we're a little further ahead on the Wedgeport line. So is there anything that we need to discuss on these?
Um, actually, I'd like to speak on something very quickly, um, on the topic of the Westport wastewater system. I should make you all aware that I've been telling you as well as probably most people have been telling you, this has been nothing but a positive project. One hundred and ten percent positive project, and it still remains a positive project. Everyone I've spoken to still says the initiative and the project, they just want more of it, put it that way. More people are asking about it every day. However, uh, the reason I am speaking is that we recently identified a couple locations, and it's, uh, it was because of a time matter. Residents that had their property done late last fall, um, there was issues with the seeding not taking because the properties, it ran late into November, and what happened, um, you know, with erosion and and water washing away some of the topsoil, some of those locations weren't quite up to snuff like the ones that were done earlier in the season. Um, so there's been some maintenance work going on and a little bit of logistical issues with getting the contractors back on site and whatnot. So I just wanna make you all aware in case you hear of this. Uh, it's something Hans and Allah have been dealing with, and hopefully, I believe Allah may be able to touch on this, but I believe a date was given to the residents that uh, I think it it mimicked, if I'm not mistaken, mimic the contract, basically saying that by such and such a date, hopefully, or we're we're anticipating having all the uh complaints addressed, I believe.
Yeah, I I think that first what I would say is that there are complaints that are still outstanding, and that the complaints are legitimate.
Agreed. They are legitimate complaints.
It's not, it's 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 work that should have been completed. It was a situation where, uh, again, the season going into winter, you're not gonna not gonna grow too much in the winter. But uh, but the commitment from the contractor or contractors in this case was to come back much earlier than than what happened. And in fact, in some cases, it's still not done. So that is not, that wasn't part of the contractual arrangement, and and the 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 Public Works Department is addressing complaints as best as possible. But we do have some frustrated residents, and it's understandable, and and we're trying, you know, we've, you know, we've hired engineers and contractors to do the work, and and, you know, the expectation would be that that the work would be do would be done by now, and it isn't. So, um, we consider it serious, and we want to resolve it.
And I hope the residents appreciate that. I've I've visited every site that I've personally received complaints on. Uh, some of them have been amended, some of them have not been yet. Uh, some of them have been amended and still feel that not that the work wasn't necessarily up to what the lawn looked like before, the property looked like before. So, uh, if I just wanna make you all aware in case you hear of anything. However, everyone agrees this initiative was amazing. It's just, uh, and like I said, it's just a few houses that were done late last year. Uh, everyone else, zero complaints.
And just one other point on that. Right now, the the last two are being done by a local contractor, and it is very likely that that local contractor will be engaged to finish some of that stuff if we can't get the other contractors to finish.
Oh, okay.
So there's, that that's as far as I'll, I mean, we do have contractual protection around this stuff, and and that's the extent of what I'm comfortable sharing, but that but that obviously, if if we if if the original contractor can't get the work done, we will find somebody who can.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, uh, looking at driving back and forth for a week to the camp, one at Harold Pudgey's all hours, man, they're done. They finished it today. That is a good job.
Yeah.
Looking at that, we probably passed there tonight.
Yeah, I passed there tonight.
Looks good.
You see, they have ample time, right? It's the right time of year to be doing that, and it looks amazing. Different contractor, but uh, not necessarily the the reason why, but yes, of course, they look awesome.
Uh, thank you, David. Uh, just looking at the municipal administration building, do we know when tenders may be going over? People have been asking me.
I I've never heard that question, counselor.
Okay. Well, I'll be the first ask, I guess. I'll be the first ask.
Yeah, um, it's a great question. Um, we are still waiting the final go-ahead from the architects. Uh, they're doing a lot of last-minute changes to the document. Um, right now, I guess I would describe it as measure eighteen times, cut once. And uh, so the other thing we're gonna do is obviously, we're gonna take a look at the timing of hitting the market, and and, you know, right now, we're in June. This is in the, it's in the heyday of
That's right.
Construction, so we have to be aware of that, and the timing of the construction may be impacted by that. And as long as we're flexible with that, then our prices ought not to be negatively impacted by the timing. So that would be my goal, is to, let's get out there as quickly as we can, and and if the prices are reflecting, um, you know, uh, high demand and low supply, then we may have to consider timing it differently.
But we can still tender out. We're not gonna wait to tender later.
No, we're not.
No, it's gonna go tender, but there's gonna be some some some, uh, if they can't start now, that we could we could award, knowing that they're gonna start at sort of later days.
Yes, so so, yes, so the tender documents will establish a chronology of events.
Right.
Right? And so one of the things that we do is is when we get the prices, we may not be happy with those prices. And one of the ways the price might be impacted is that is when they can actually do the work. So that we would negotiate, we have the ability to negotiate with the top, or I guess lowest bidders, uh, around timing. We intend to do that regardless because we want the input from the contractor in terms of, well, if you do it this way, we can do it for that, but if you change it to this, we can do it less expensive and without really reducing the integrity of the work. So we do have a process in our tendering that will allow that back and forth to happen before we issue a tender.
So do you feel as though this these tenders will be going out within the next month, two months?
Less than a month. I would say we're talking days.
Okay.
Perhaps, perhaps week or weeks.
No, just good, thank you.
Fourteen days is my best. Fourteen days is my best estimate at this point.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else?
Counselor's direct.
Counselor's direct.
Uh, Alaa, um, on this part of the building, I remember a month, two months ago, the architects had come with a, I don't know if you'd la, called it a class A, class B, class C pricing. So, with this round, do we have a class, because we were way too high, did, did we get a class B or C pricing? And does it seem to look good, or it's not in, it, it's not in the card at all, you're just gonna hold the tender to see what it is?
Uh, we did receive a class A, uh, estimate, but it's like anything else, it's an estimate.
Yes.
And the staff has gone through it and, and recommended some changes.
Yeah.
Um, the number is, is, we're not really in the position to disclose it because we don't want the tender to, to be impacted by that, but, but the, uh, the number was reasonably acceptable, uh, within the budget parameters that we had set initially. We expect major differences in both directions, potentially, based on, uh, who actually delivers the service and, uh, um, and who, and, and whether the bids are competitive or not. So, there's some uniqueness about the building that makes it more expensive, I think we talked about that, you know, like the, for instance, the council chambers and the, the roofs and and so, but that's offset by a lot of other things that are done really simply, like the flooring and other things, so, uh, we're still very committed to having an accessible building that is net zero. That's still our commitment as council.
Still the commitment.
As council has set, like, that's the commitment, is that net zero component. And, uh, we've received feedback from the FCM on our application. Uh, I think it's mostly positive feedback, we don't have any approval, of course, but we have mostly, uh, a positive feedback from our application and, and we.
Will it be September, October before?
Yes. Yes, so the funding would be announced in September, but regardless of whether it was announced in September or not, we'd have to finance it until the construction was completed. And that's just, that's no different than any other, uh, project. So, we may have to ask for bridge financing if that's what, if that's what's required, which is just temporary financing. But, you know, ultimately, if we get the FCM, it will lock in at the end of the project.
Thank you.
East Publico Water, you told me, has there, has there been, uh, an application going in for federal funding of any kind?
Not as of yet, there had, there is an application that has been begun by me and, uh, it's not, it's not completed, uh, to go to federal funding just yet.
What I ask because of where I work, I get questions and.
The, it, the status is ongoing on that.
Okay. No more discussion on these? We can move on.
You done number five?
Just a little, yeah. Number five is, uh, the building.
Yeah, so just quickly, number five being the, uh, uh, this is, um, a document that Chris, uh, has created and this will be what we use to track the project. So there'll be, this is, again, this is an example, this is not finalized just yet. Uh, and some of these numbers and things that are here are not actually correct, so this is just an example.
Oh.
Okay, so, so. So, so the, so what it's, basically, it's gonna show the upcoming tasks, that, like, you know, whether we're in good standing or whether there's a risk. What's the overdue tasks, what are, are we on budget, are we on time? And so this construction, and then it shows the construction date, et cetera, so this document, we will be, we will be carrying each month and we'll be carrying up to three months of the information, so you can always look back at the last two months to see what progress has been made month to month. So, we feel like this is something that we can also share with the public, something that we can put on our website, uh, social media, et cetera, so people can track the progress of the, of the project.
Great, great idea. Good work, Chris.
Okay, that's all on that. Item six, for decision. Compass knows Goshark Cooperative Home Homes Memorandum, all by understanding, and there's the attachment. And we need this in order for Compass to, to even consider doing anything, so I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this, but.
I'll make it a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll second it, and that's true, I know there's a motion right here. Okay, so the, the, the motion is, where's the motion?
The very bottom.
It sounds we just need this to basically initiate talks, correct?
That's what it is.
We're just giving you the okay to sign the, the, uh, the memorandum of agreement.
That, that's correct.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded.
Question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted, carried. Bylaw, number twenty-seven A, Solid Waste Resource Bylaw, and this is the first reading and this is what we had, um, our planner, that's what our planner, uh, was here last meeting, so.
Well, this, sorry, um, Mr., Mr., uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, this one is the solid waste resource.
Oh, okay.
And that's okay, this has been recommended, the amendment's been recommended by Waste Check and we reviewed the recommendations. It's not significantly different than our existing bylaw and we would recommend, of course, first reading based on our review.
Do we, do we have to move this right now, do we wait, how does that work on that? We move this now?
We move this first. This, this would be first, first reading.
So we don't move anything now?
It, you can, you make the motion and considering the first reading on this bylaw.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It, we'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted, carried. The Regional Emergency Management Organization. Okay.
This can only, this can only be.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that Miss Paldivar, I'll authorize the CAO and EMO coordinator to develop the Regional Emergency Management Organization of the Town and Municipality of Yarmouth and that the draft agreement and the budget be presented to council prior to finalizing the fiscal two thousand nineteen and twenty operation budget.
I'll second it.
No, we seconded it. Any discussion?
I'm not totally comfortable with this. I know there's a requirement with, uh, with, uh, what we had with, with Quinnen and with the flood there and I certainly have read everything and a lot of stuff that I, you know, that I've, that I've read, it's A one, but here's my concern. Uh, I'm, I'm very concerned of if once we get with other places, other units, I should say, and then the first thing, you know, are they gonna be asking for a certain amount of money? Uh, if it's in the town, where it's gonna be at, are we gonna be throwing this, you're gonna put this money, that money, I, I, I wanna tread very carefully. You know, we know what happens going on with dispatch and, and some other, other items that are going on. And I, and I'm quite concerned over that, I want the other councils to be, you know, be careful, I'm not saying I'm against the, the motion, but I wanna tread very carefully here to see where we're going, you know, this is, I'm sure, Alaa, you've, you've talked to our, uh, CEO, to our coordinator and, uh, again, I'm very worried how this is gonna be structured, uh, how this is gonna work and are we gonna, again, gonna be dumping money somewhere that we might be caught up down the road that we're, again, they're asking for this money or it's no good and we gotta go back. Uh, that's my concern. And, and I think it's a valid concern, but, uh, uh, for myself anyhow, a, a, and for our residents, uh, I think it's a good idea, but by God, I'm just wondering, is it gonna be one place that's running it? Uh, with some of the stuff that's been going on, I guess that's why I'm concerned. I know what's happened with dispatch, the first thing, they're gone, we're left holding the bag, we're trying to run around to find the dispatch and, and do our own thing now. That's, that's my concern. I just want to bring that up. Is there, will there be anything in the amendments or the, uh, the CAOs will be talking together, okay?
Yes, so your concerns would be certainly legitimate and ought to be part of the agreement. So, let me just try to explain what I think will happen here now. The REMO doesn't necessarily have to be about infrastructure. It doesn't have to be necessarily about things that we need to buy for emergency management. Now, it, it, the importance of what we're doing now is a regional coordination, so, um, currently, the town and municipality of Yarmouth operate, uh, an emergency operations center out of their Public Works building and right attached to the, um, what's in Fire Department building, actually.
Public Works?
On Pleasant Street.
Okay.
So, so there's a, there's a separate place, it's, it's large enough, net, uh, definitely for, for us, it's, it's, it's plug and play, it's good to go. So, from our perspective, if we were to not engage in a regional, uh, EOC, we may have to invest our own money in that infrastructure. Now, and we may do that anyway because, because we would probably want a secondary site.
Because Wetchport was a discussion we had on these tables.
That's correct, so rather than Wetchport being a secondary, uh, primary site, under REMO, it might be a secondary site, we still have to spend money. So, so then, of course, uh, if something happens with the EOC in the town, the Wetchport EOC could be put up. Now, the other thing is, is that just because you're REMO doesn't mean that you would open an EOC, um, um, uh, with, with all three units being fully engaged for a very small issue in a very, in a very small community. Right? So, so a lot of times, that gets handled without even opening the emergency operations center. So I think the, some of the benefits that we should be thinking about is that we're, we're gonna be using the same resources, we're gonna be using the same volunteers. Um, I think, I'm thinking of amateur radio in particular. Um, you know, we, we had a strong amateur radio, uh, personnel that was very committed to EOC, but there's not as many as there used to be. And, uh, so, so doing that together would, would certainly be somewhat beneficial. Uh, uh, you know, I think your concerns really just need to be voiced and, and council's concerns need to be voiced as we come along. And when we start drafting agreements, which we will likely steal a template from, from, uh, Queens or there, there's, there's two or three that are very, very strong. And we would tailor them in the best way that we feel for our region. It doesn't mean that we would not meet with our volunteer fire departments and, and engage in that kind of meeting. Um, so, yeah, so I think we just have to make sure.
You're certainly, you know, I wasn't not gonna, I wasn't gonna vote for it, but I just wanted to voice those streets, thank you, Alaa, you could be the rest of that one.
So our, our EMO coordinator, would she, or would that person stay on, uh, for Argyle, or how is that gonna work?
Likely what would happen, and again, this would depend on the group decision, but like what has happened in other places and that's shown to be successful, is that you would have a coordinator and then you'd have an assistant coordinator or a communications person or whatever you might give the title to. And those two people would operate as, you know, stipend, not employees, but like as, as part-time, I guess, employees of, of the tri-unit. And then there would be a staff person or persons designated in each municipality that would, that would assist them in their work. So, because of the retirement of the, the, well, I don't know if it's official retirement or but, uh, Mr. Richardson will, will not, will not be serving after, I think, September, I believe. And he might be, uh, replaced currently by his assistant, uh, due to health reasons. And, uh, it is more likely than not than our, that our EMO coordinator would become the REMO coordinator. So, that might help us all, uh, feel comfortable about how that comes about. Um, it, and, and certainly, um, that is not official, but, you know, if she had an interest, I imagine that the three units would be interested in engaging her for that.
Question.
Okay, question called on, on the motion. Oh, you had a question, I thought you were calling for the question.
I called the question.
Okay.
Did someone make the motion?
Yeah, the motion's been made.
You didn't second it?
Yep.
So question has been called, so we have to vote on the, you, you had something you wanted, can, can. Yeah, you can, you can, uh, make your comment.
Uh, the only thing I was gonna say is being on the EMO committee, I feel as though it can be a good thing, by all means, regional, you know? And that, uh, tread lightly, uh, by all means, watch what we're doing, you know, but I feel as though we, if something big happens, we are gonna be working together anyway. So at least here, you're working under a structure, that's all. So, but, you know, I, I believe we have to keep our own identity of some sort, by all means. But no, I think it's, it's got a potential to be good for all partners involved.
The question we called, all in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted, carried. Fire Bonds, the report, now, it's under decision. We want to send these, did, did the fire departments receive this? This report, or this is, I, I, I guess my question is, what we're, what we're looking for as a decision here?
Twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars in improvements, I just, one of the things we're looking for, I think.
I, I can provide a little bit of background.
Yes, please.
Um, so that's the same report that was, uh, attached to the agenda last meeting. Uh, this meeting, we're simply looking for a direction from council as to whether or not you want us to move forward. We're assessing officially all of the deficiencies and improvements that are listed in the report. So there's no decision on, on amount of funding or the type of work. Um, we would have to go to the extent of contacting all the property owners. Um, that, that information comes from the fire departments, so they're aware of the information that's within it. Uh, but it would just be coordinating all of that before actually doing all the work. So it's just there, again, because you had very much time to look at it the last time and just to get a sense from council, the direction you'd like for us to move.
I'd like to so move that we, uh, uh, start to move on to this, the next phase of this, uh, of this project as it's, this has been reported, as it's, you know, safety reasons and, uh, for the public, I, it's so important.
I'll second that. I gotta call, or we gotta call about this today, one in Wetchport, this is an issue. It's on you.
So just on the, just a question of clarity on the motion, um, so what I'm understanding is that it's priority and you want this to happen as soon as possible. Whether it's in the budget or not, uh, we will be moving forward, is this my understanding?
This is, this is what I'm saying.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, like I would deal with the serious ones, maybe some can be done next year, right?
We'll certainly prioritize the ones that require the most, uh, that have the, what we think is the largest safety issues.
Safety issues, yes.
That's right. We'll pri- prioritize based on safety.
It's a great report, there's a lot, there was a lot of work in there.
Lot of work there.
Yeah, okay. No more discussion, question called, all in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted, carried. Area rate policy amendment.
Just a second, ladies.
This is second reading.
Correct.
Yes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Question.
Question called for, all in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted, carried. The next one. That's a request, request from a fire department. Do you wanna take that one? Uh, Alaa?
Sorry, which?
West Publico.
West Publico Fire Protection.
Oh, the, oh, okay, sorry, I was on the wrong line, okay, yes. So, we picked up this property on tax sale. Uh, I don't know if it was last tax sale, the tax sale before. Um, we, we put the opening bid on, on a property that was adjacent to West Publico as we, West Publico Fire Department as we believed it might be in their interest, um, to pick up that property and, and of course, it was in their interest. So this letter's asking us to transfer the ownership to them and they would offer to pay half the cost of preparing and registering the tax deed. And of course, they're asking us to waive sewer charges and capital fees as the lot will be used for parking, it's no longer being used for, for, uh, for, for homestead or, or for capital connection. Certainly, the sewer fee for the charges, the operating charges would, would be waived anyway. Uh, the only issue is whether the capital sewer fee would be waived as a consequence of, of that, uh, because that property was included in the project that we intended to collect the funds over time. Now, keeping in mind, it went to tax sale, so that money was not being paid.
That's right.
Uh, so that's just, that's just a fact of the case.
Yeah.
So, this is a nonprofit organization that's seeking to support, um, obviously, fire protection in the area, so, um, the letter is, is very clear. Um, the letter is, is very clear in its request. Um, I, certainly, we have no, the, the, the purpose why we bid it was potentially to aid them, so. And the fact that they're looking to pay for half the cost, I think, is, is reasonable and. You know, I think the only thing that, you know, that, that, I would certainly recommend that we do that. Uh, the, the capital sewer fee is, is something you may wish to debate, um, you can debate all of it if you want, but. The other two seem like a pretty easy slam dunk, the only thing that might be a little complex is the capital fee.
I, I'd, I'd say the capital sewer fee only has what, another six years or so on?
Correct.
Okay, uh, and being as a fire department, you're only looking a hundred and five dollars per year at six years, so you're only looking at six hundred and thirty dollars. Which is no big amount of money to us, but it, you know, it's a page to the fire department. I'd be willing to make a motion that we turn that property over to the fire department. And waive the hundred and five uh, dollars and fifty cents per year for the sewer fee.
Do we have a second, I guess, move in seconded discussion?
Uh, Chairman, Chairman of the, of the sewer, uh, has this? Have you done this before, is that part of your regulations, uh, there's nothing that you're going against the other people, from what you see?
Uh, I, I can't remember having a case like this on top hand, but I just can't uh. But the fact that this was on tax sale and, and the fact that it's, you know, we, 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 the municipality were the owners. Uh, and that's not what we're in the business of owning land like that, right, so.
It's a no brainer.
Have we been paying our fee?
I, I can't, I can't, I can't recall. But what I can, I can assure you as council is that. Uh, while I don't think there's been a history of, of, of us writing this off unless somebody didn't pay their taxes and we somehow couldn't sell the property. Um, there has been a history of adding a hundred and five or, or in, or the full sewer fee of two hundred and eleven when we have a new connection. So when we have a new connection, so our policy says, if, if you weren't connected in year one when the project occurred. And you're in year six and you connect, you still pay the two hundred and eleven for the duration of the project. So you have recovered more than one of those connections. Um, so financially for the project, it wouldn't, it, it would not have an impact.
You win some and you lose some, right?
The end of the day, thank you.
You, you win four and you lose point five.
That's right.
Yeah.
Question.
Okay, question called for, all in favor, aye, aye, undermined, carried. Prince Smith to the one that I brought up, and that's the conference for the, uh, it's, Elven's, uh, Library Board Nova Scotia. And they're having their conference here in Yarmouth. And they would like, this is September. They would like, and I say they would like that, the board, we feel as a board that we as board members should be attending that, that conference. Um, it was held in, in uh, Hornwallis last time, last year, I, I didn't go. And the way, the way it works is, on the board, we have uh, council members and we have uh, uh, public members on. The public members, the library pays for the registration. Council members, they ask the councils to look after their own counselor. They, they, we need, we need, I guess, if we need a decision whether or not. They will pay for my registrations, it's a hundred and sixty-five dollars for the conference, for a three-day conference. So what I'm looking for is to see if uh, if council will pay for.
I'll move the way it's said.
Okay. Move in seconded, all in favor, aye, aye, undermined, carried. So we'll have to let, uh, I, I will let them know. I think maybe what they're gonna do is send an invoice or something to the municipality for that. We can pay, I think we can pay the library themselves. Okay, other business. The report on, on uh. That, that uh, choice made, well, not just choice, it was between the three uh, uh, housing uh, uh, committees. And I guess this is just, the report is there, it's a very, very good report, we, they got a lot of information, somebody did. Hell of a lot of work on this, and this brings us back to what we just passed as well for Compass, so. I think it's there for, for, for discussion, if anybody wants to discuss it or if there's any, I know it's a long report. But there is a lot of good uh, information on there, for sure.
Yep.
So there's no discussion on that. Audit and Planning Advisor Committee Member Recruitment, now, there's no task in there. Where are we going with this, have we, anything been done or?
Simply added it to the agenda because we're still looking for members and after repeated attempts through media and advertising, we failed to uh. Recruit any new members, so if you, as counselors, know of anyone who might be interested in uh, recruiting members of those committees. They can call the office for more information, or they can just simply give us their name and, and we can uh, kind of accomplish that and coordinate with them to hopefully. Encourage them to participate, um, the audit committee, there are new requirements, um, as you know, for expense reporting on behalf of counselors and CEOs. Um, but there is new requirements for the audit committee. Um, one of them is to have at least two members from the community on that committee, so currently, we're not following that new requirement, but we still have some time. Um, and the other is to meet at least twice a year, um, a minimum. Um, so that would be the requirement generally of that, of someone on that committee. Um, the P A C committee will be working more frequently or regularly in the, in the near future because of the changes with the legalization of cannabis. Um, so we're going to be doing some work on that in, in addition to agriculture might cause some planning requirements. That, that's the general gist of, of what uh, someone interested in those committees might, might be looking at in terms of work in the next year.
The topic of cannabis might actually entice someone to join the P A C, is possible.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a, I don't know if I'll say controversial, but it's an important topic.
Yeah.
And actually, I didn't know if you were still looking for a person for the auditing or not, I do have a name for you people.
Yep.
Thank you.
So it's two, two from the public for the audit committee, and how many for the P A C, you, do we have a number or?
Uh, I mean, P A C would be looking for a bit more, probably three or four.
Okay.
And can a person serve a vote?
They can say certainly can.
Okay, thank you.
If, if it does come to that we have more than, more spaces than we have, more requests than we have spaces, we obviously be looking at experience and, and their expertise in that field. But it hasn't been the case in, in the past, so you know, someone can serve a vote, please. Four, three, four, four, ten.
Okay. Town of Shelburne requests disaster mitigation and adaptation fund. So they're, they're just looking for an interest, it's a request just to see if we're interested in.
Plowing?
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, plowing.
That's all I could make out of it.
The only thing I would add, Mr. Chair, is that, is that uh. You know, the, the Town of Shelburne reaching out and, and asking about. How the region can address the effects of storm surges and climate change. Is really kind of a call to a need for regional planning around land use and climate change mitigation and adaptation. And so as you know, we have a district planning commission that we're, we're moving away from, we're actually, we're actually, uh, we have a draft um, agreement between the municipality of Yarmouth. And once that's passed, the D P C would dissolve. But we're gonna lose our senior planner in September. And so we'll have a, a, a planning commission with no planner, uh, we'll have a G I S specialist. And, you know, this letter is, 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 is really a call out to the region to see if we can somehow find a way to do planning. At a broader scale as opposed to just two municipal units, and I think this, as, I mean, this is actually encouraging letter. Because it shows that they're looking beyond their borders to try to address this issue. Cause individually, we, we really can't, we can't address this just one municipality, we have to do it larger.
I'll make a motion that we respond uh, to the Town of Shelburne that we are interested in, in pursuing this topic.
I'll second that.
More discussion? There's none, all in favor, aye, aye, undermined, carried. Next item is correspondence, we have.
Wasn't there seven D?
Oh, sorry, there's not, there's two more.
Yep.
No, no, here, we're here, yes.
I received a letter from Alan Spinney. And he is contacting us in regards to celebration of his grandmother's hundreds birthday, Mary Lily and Harden. In hopes that we can send a birthday message. Do we have such a certificate that we can have me sign? And uh, send it to their keel home before July seventh? Or I can deliver it as soon as you um.
Yep, just pass me along the letter and I'll look this up.
And uh, so we have them here to just print it out, but.
Yep.
And uh, I'll stop by tomorrow and sign that.
I've sent one before.
Me too.
Okay, we don't need a decision on that, it's just something that we done.
Yep.
And the other one, is Calvin.
Okay, just uh, I guess you guys received the email, I do believe I sent it and uh, I just, nobody had responded and I was like, okay, uh. Does this thing come out or, anyway, just uh, Chris Locke here, who's uh, I, I guess the head of the Bay, Bay of Fundy, uh, Sea Kayaking Symposium. Not gonna have one this year, it's every two years, so next September, not this September, next September, but he's coming. Uh, in September in the Tuscan Islands, he does uh, kayak courses and stuff. So he's got a group coming in September and he was hoping to get some footage of the Tuscan Islands uh. For, for advertising for the next year and uh, you know, I guess the, also that the municipality could use all of that footage if they wanted to, so. Uh, I think Chris sent me an email and said that he had talked to Charlene and that there might be some monies there. And also that they were gonna approach YASTA, uh, so basically it's just an update, uh, we're still working on it and uh. The, the asset was fifteen hundred dollars, but uh, you know, I, I'm pretty sure that whatever we can come up with, if it's, doesn't end up fifteen hundred, I think we could probably do something. I don't know if there's anybody in-house that would help on a project like this, I was thinking Alex with the, with the drone, but I mean, I'm just.
It's possible, uh, we haven't contacted, uh, we haven't talked to Alex about it, well, not, not, not as of yet, uh. You know, we can put them in connection and see if there's something that can be done. Typically, when we do that, though, when we do it for a third party, we do, there is a fee involved, so it wouldn't be that it would eliminate.
Yeah.
Their financial obligation.
If I may, I might have had a brain fart at the beginning of the meeting, I'm gonna declare conflict of interest on this one because there's only a few legal chartering businesses. Uh, to take people into the Tuscan Islands right here, so I'm gonna refrain from deciding on this one. While it being one of them.
Yeah, okay. Counselor's ready.
Uh. Not trying to be negative on this, uh, uh, Chris, uh, Calvin, do, do you think there's a way we could get a letter instead of somebody coming? And, and I know it's, could we get a, yeah, could we get a letter from, from them to make it more official, that's how I feel. I think it's a great idea, but if we get something official, yeah.
And I, I also have a question for Lysian, even though maybe you're in con- in conflict, but. Do you actually have some footage that the, that the seat of symposium could use?
Uh, I'm, I'm sure YASTA does, my company's done work with YASTA before in the Tuscan Islands, uh, we brought drone experts out there. Um, and ultimately, YASTA has that footage, I, I bet they could assist you.
So, and we are part of, of YASTA, so uh, okay, great. Thank you.
No, that's the only thing, you asked exactly what I was wondering, if there was already some footage around, if footage could be used.
So there's no decision to be made here now?
No.
And by the way, people have asked me from time to time, what these letters, and yes, that means Yarmouth and Acadian Shores, Torres Strait.
I'll never forget the uh, counselor orientation meeting I went to uh, weeks after I became a counselor. The acronyms was the worst thing to try to.
It's not right.
And you don't think of it now?
No.
Because you get used to things like D P C and P A C and things like that, and I'll never forget being in those meetings and I was like, what?
That's the lingo.
The lingo is right.
Now we go to correspondence, so we have NSF M Board Report. Western Counties Regional Library Minutes, March fifteenth. Counselors want third tax exemption.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On that one, the, the, the purpose of that, is that just for information on that? And if you, you, you were Chris put down there, I wasn't sure what that was about. I mean, I know it's about, but is it something we had to act on or is it just?
Well, you, you don't have to act on it at all, in fact, but as a council, you should be made aware and so should your residents that. That this part of how you're paid, a third of it is currently tax-free. And that was the rules back in the day, because the understanding was that you were not entitled to uh, claim expenses. For travel in your own community, there were things that you were, that you were spending as a counselor that you were not getting from the municipal unit. So this was way back, that this rule was set in place. So it said, well, in, in, in absence or in recognition of that, one-third of the stipend is tax-free. So, so that is eliminated effective January first, two thousand and nineteen. So what will happen for all of you, warden, deputy and council, is that one hundred percent of the income of your stipend will become taxable. So, um. There are a number of ways we can address this, there are actually some municipalities. That are increasing the stipend to offset the cost to the counselor. That is an option that has been done. There's also the option of doing absolutely nothing and saying, you know what, pay your taxes, away you go. Um, it, it is not, so, so, so it's, it's not a reduction of income to anyone, it's a reduction of net income.
Net income.
So, uh, and so, uh, it doesn't make any real changes to the actual council compensation. But what you take home is, will be different. And so. There's, there are a number of options, there's also options around how travel is treated. And how some of that might be able to offset some of the, um, some of the taxation that will be put on your stipend. So there's, there's tax planning uh, options available to you. Uh, because this taxation is now coming to you. Uh, so, what, what I've asked as A M A President is for us to talk to the N S F M, the U N, formerly known as U N S M. To talk about, well, why should fifty-two, fifty-one municipalities figure out, figure their own way here when you could hire one professional firm? And they could probably give you tax, tax advice, you know, as opposed to doing it fifty-two times, so I don't know where that stands right now. So, um, there is, you know, there's examples of what has happened in other units or what they're planning on doing. Right now, there's no decision to be, to be had, but it's for your thought at this point as to what your options might be.
I had a couple of questions on that.
So, okay, the one-third was that we were exempt for, uh, expenses like your telephone and all that stuff, right?
Yeah.
So now can't, since, since, can't we just claim that stuff?
Yeah, that was my question.
That was my question too.
That's my question, I have.
Well, um, so it's, I'm gonna be careful because I don't wanna give tax advice and then like be like slapped on my hand for giving advice. Uh, I, I believe that it opens other opportunities for you. So I think particularly around travel. It would allow, it, it could allow you, like, so for instance, one of the things we might, we might be able to do is to change the way that you're paid. And so there's a section that is based on your services and then there's a section that's based on travel. And so travel allowances are taxable, but they also allow you to deduct expenses against them. So there are ways that you can change the nature of compensation to reduce, to reduce but not eliminate. What you would otherwise, otherwise have paid on that section or one-third section of, of income. There's no, there, I don't, based on what I see, I mean, unless you're doing something very drastic, there's no way that you're not gonna pay more tax. You will be paying more tax because you can't, you can't take a third of a stipend and then call it travel and it be a reasonable amount. It's just not, so.
What about your phone and your insurance and your, all the stuff in your home that you use at offices, that? Do you know, I know you can't, you can't give advice?
I'm not sure. I, I'm, I'm not sure how to answer that question, I'm not. I, I'm, I'm not sure how to answer that question. I'm not sure, because the, to answer that question properly, we'd have to ask, where is your office? Right? And so, and so the tax, we'd almost have to get a ruling from Revenue Canada or get a professional firm to, to give you that information, I guess. It, it really depends on, the people that can claim home office expenses, their principal office is at home.
My wife did photography. She claims a coaching and everything.
Correct. But if, if Revenue Canada considers your principal work to be here.
That's what I thought you meant, yeah.
Then you can't deduct anything from the house.
As far as councillors, you know, yeah, but that's my opinion, right?
I, I, I don't, again, you'd almost have to get a ruling, but I believe the interpretation is that this is your primary place of employment. This, this particular, like twenty-seven Courthouse Road.
Because most of your work is on your house or on the road in your car.
Again.
Anyhow, yeah, anyhow, not your work.
Yeah, but I'm not sure what the answer is exactly. It's something that I'm looking to.
Thank you.
To claim mileage on your income tax, I can tell you it's a hassle because you, you have to keep a log of your personal and, of everything, your personal driving. You have to have a kilometer reading at the beginning of the year, a kilometer reading at the end, and then you have to, to claim a percentage of that against your income tax. I, I've done that three years and it's, it's, it's not an easy thing. You gotta keep track of where you're traveling. So what is personal, what is not, you know?
It's not as easy as.
It's not. It's, it's easy, but it's a hassle, for sure, for what it might be worth.
So hopefully the NSFM can help us with.
Come up with something.
Thank you.
And I wonder, CAO Muse, if you would, just for the people that may be watching at home and that, can you tell them how much we make a year as councillor?
Yes. Councillor makes nineteen thousand five hundred and change.
Okay, yeah.
The, I'm going by memory. The, the deputy warden makes approximately twenty-four.
Twenty-one something.
Twenty-one, twenty-one something. See, it's memory. And just, if you, if you'll bear with me a moment, I will find thirty-one and change for, for the, for the, for the warden.
I was just wondering too, because I was told a little while ago I was making around forty thousand here a year and I was just wondering if you guys were short changing me or what? Being I was the new one.
There's a lot of.
Go by your height, go by your height.
See, I, I.
Thank you, Mr. Saret. I'd like to have a chat with you after the meeting.
I believe, I believe councillor Saret is the tallest councillor.
It's paid by words.
I love it.
We have, we have to talk about a rate increase if it's that.
Move on, move on then.
Move on.
Oh my God, they're gonna get a worm.
You're okay with that one?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The appraisal of your surplus land.
So that was the deal of land is.
In, that we discussed at the last.
Yeah. I've been going through here and I find it took me a while, but it looks like it's what, assessed at ten thousand dollars, is that correct?
That's right.
So we had been approached by somebody who had wanted to buy it, right?
Correct.
And I guess in discussion we had, if I remember correctly, we had mentioned, or I had maybe mentioned that, you know, should we, you know, put it out to everybody because, you know, and I, I can't remember what we had decided or we just cut the estimate here and.
We hadn't decided.
But it, we, we didn't know that it abutted more than one person either. There's two properties that it, that it abuts now, plus the ones on the, on either side. So there's four, there's four properties now that, that abut that property.
So, so the equitable thing to do would be to either advertise it locally or as a, a sale by tender with a minimum bid. Now that you know that the appraisal is that amount, you would expect the minimum bid to be close to that amount. And those that are interested will submit a written bid. The other option, which might be a bit more expensive because you'd be subject to a real estate fee, is to list it. Is to list it as surplus property in, you know, MLS or wherever and, and that those interested would, 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 would give a surprise. I would, I would suggest that as a council, it would be prudent for you to do it publicly as opposed to doing it unilaterally. And if the person or persons in question are interested and motivated to purchase the property, they will submit a bid that is high enough in order to secure that. So, you know, we're, we're, we're in the interest of selling this property, that is for sure. But we have to be cognizant that this property impacts multiple people. We also have to be cognizant that there's only one that's actually asked us about it. So it's, 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 it's a bit of a delicate walk there, but I would suggest public, a public advertising and I would, and I would, I would prefer to do the, the tender, sale by tender because we can handle it internally. And we have done that in the past. That is our precedent for, for properties of this nature.
Do we have an onus to inform, well, I guess, the other three owners?
We should.
I, I would, as a due diligence, I would contact each of the abutting owners to let them know that it will be advertised.
Because I don't wanna get in a situation where I missed all the advertising.
Thank you, exactly.
You know, we, we, we would take the extra step to make sure that they were aware of it. At the risk of potentially causing an issue with the person and persons that are interested in it in the first place, right? But that's, that's how we have to, that's how we have to operate.
That's a responsibility that we have though.
No, sorry.
Our responsibility is to the taxpayer and not to individual.
Not just to the individual.
Yeah, that's correct.
Mr. Chair? Yes?
Alan, if I remember right, we cannot sell it under the, under the assessment. I mean, there's appraisal, but there's assessment by the law. How does it go again?
By the law, by the Municipal Government Act, says that you have to sell your property to individual people at market value.
Market.
But it does not define what market value means. So market value can mean a lot of things. You have an appraisal, it's a pretty strong evidence of market value. So that's what you would do. Now, market value, my definition is what, what a willing buyer and seller are, are negotiate. But, but not having an idea of what it's worth, the appraisal is critical to that conversation.
And if this wasn't landlocked, if you had access from the road, it'd be waterfront, oceanfront, it'd be worth a lot more than that.
I get you, I get you.
So whoever, either one of those four people, they buy it, they're opening up, they're opening up access to it, right?
Absolutely, you got it.
So it becomes more valuable to them after they have it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, so do you need a motion to?
Uh, I think in absence of a policy, a motion might be useful here to, to give me the permission to go to tender. Public tender to sell the surplus property in question.
Yeah, second. And, yeah, and that would, questions, right?
Okay.
That would also be notifying the properties of the boarding owners.
Yes.
And that, that.
Abutting owner.
Abutting owners, yeah.
Question?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unmined, carried. Yarmouth County Mutual Aid Association Forest Fire Service, that's a letter they are concerned.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of comments on that. We're dragging the meeting on, but I, when I read this, it's, it's, it's quite a concern. I, I go to the Argyle Mutual Aid Association and I've heard this before at their meetings, but I, I wasn't expecting, this is from the Yarmouth County Mutual Aid. But do we, is there any agreement with the municipality, I guess my question would be to CAO, with DNR on, on our firemen having to go that you know of under the MGA?
I'd have to search that to be sure. I'm not certain.
If we're.
I, I, I believe the Part Ten registration is an agreement between ourselves and volunteer fire departments. I'm unaware that it includes anything of DNR regarding provincial responsibilities. There may be other regulations in place that, that would trigger, be triggered, so I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
Could we look into that? You know, just while we're at it. That's my only question I have.
Okay.
We don't need a motion on that, do we?
I don't think there's.
No, that's just an information request.
And the other one is Town of Shelburne, rural no Scotia Health, crisis work, and you have another letter from, and it seems to be basically went to all the municipalities and towns as well. And if there's no discussion on that one, any, no financial requests? Any agenda topics for next meeting or notice of motion?
Mr. Chair, Deputy Warden, the only item I would just remind all of you is that if we're going to respect Quinnen's Fire Department's.
We're gonna need.
Uh, we're gonna require a meeting before.
For August seventeenth.
August twelve.
No.
July.
July.
July nineteenth.
To, to meet their advertising requirements.
Yes.
To meet the advertising requirements.
That's for their area rate.
No, that, uh, that's for their request for.
Hundred twenty-five thousand.
Hundred twenty-five.
But they wanna have a meeting August second to set their area rate and they have to know what to do.
Yes, I'm not sure why they're setting their area rate now. They, they can't go this year. It's too late for this year.
Is there any AGM? Is there any?
I see.
Yeah, they want us to get the ball rolling.
Okay, so that people are, yeah, because the rate can't come in until next year.
Can't come until next year.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we'll be notified.
Did we need a motion on anything to do for you on your part, for the, for staff on that part or not really?
Um, I mean, it doesn't, it certainly doesn't hurt to put it into motion. I mean, I, we've received our instruction. I think we're clear on what we need to do. But, um.
Sure, you're all set with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
That's good. Yeah, it's all right.
Okay, question period?
We do have, we do have an online, we have a question.
We have an online question.
We do. A resident is asking about the status of our ambulance service that has been taken away, I guess, or the designated ambulance.
In Pumniko.
Correct. I'll, I'll read the question. I don't have it in front of me just right now. It's still wondering about our ambulance service, dot, dot, dot. That's the question that's being asked. So I have not received any update from any department on this matter.
I cornered Minister Mumbruket at the UNS Spring Workshop and he was supposed to contact me. He didn't, so I contacted Chris Donald Tremont and told him that he was supposed to call me back. And he called Mumbruket and was supposed to call me. I never got a call back. So this was within the last spring workshop. So, so I'm waiting for somebody to contact me to find out what was with the petition and all that. So that's, that's all I know.
Yes.
And the only thing I will say, this is still a very sore point with me. The people of the Pumnikos and the Argyles ran their own ambulance service for thirty-five years down there before it was taken over by EMC. And they were promised much better than what they're getting right now. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to the people. And not only now is it a problem in the Pumnikos and the Argyles and possibly the municipality, but it's a growing problem all across the province by what I've been told by other paramedics. I keep getting calls at home. They are in a position where they can't say a whole lot, but it is a growing problem by what I've been hearing across the province. And I feel as though it has to be looked at sooner than later or it's not gonna have a good outcome one of these times. When you've got an eighty-four-year-old lady like we had this year, you know, laying out in front of the COF in West Pumniko, Lower West Pumniko, that had a weight thirty-plus minutes in the cold and that I don't think it's, it's, when it was run by the people of the Pumnikos and the Argyles, there was never a thirty-minute wait laying out on the ground for an ambulance to arrive.
It's not acceptable.
What, what gets me is the history of it. Excuse me, when you told me that it's the community that got together to make that building and to make that service and once they, they relinquished it to, to who currently operates it, that they understood that it would always remain in a priority site and it did it. That, that to me is what got me.
That's what they were told and like the meeting I read here that, or the, sorry, the letter I read here that evening and that by a employee of EHS at the time, we want to build on that service in West Pumniko. I don't think they're building on it. I think they're taking it apart.
We should have that letter when they made the agreement.
Oh, I have that. She's, this lady stated it publicly and that when it was being taken over by EMC and EHS, we wanna build on that service and that. So I don't think it's building up.
I was there too. I remember that.
So.
Unbelievable, unbelievable.
Okay. Oh, should we go on camera?
So move.
Second.
Two-minute break.